Order them ladies and gentlemen, nice to be pleased to stand for the Mayor of the City of Clarence, Alderman Longchamp.
Good evening everyone, thank you very much. To open proceedings tonight, I'll ask the General Manager to read the council prayer.
Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to vow to save thy blessing upon this council, direct in prosperous deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of the City of Clarence. Amen.
Thank you Andrew, I'd like to acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal people as the traditional custodians of the land that we're meeting on tonight, pay respects to elders past and present, also remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded audio visually and will be available on the council website later this week. Thank you. Clear the meeting open and note there are no apologies. Confirmation of minutes, we have two, the council meeting number 27th of May and the special council meeting on the 3rd of June, as the minutes are circulated, it'll be taken as read and confirmed. Thanks Alderman Longley. Have a second to thank you Alderman Kennedy. All those here in favour? Against, carried. Mayor's communication, a couple of items, firstly, it's our esteemed General Manager's last formal council meeting and I'd like before retirement, and I'd like to just say a few words to, by way of thanks. Andrew's been our General Manager since 2003 and he's served in local government overall for more than 43 years. He originally began his career in local government as an environmental health officer. Prior to joining Clarence, he was the Chief Executive Officer of the Greater Bendigo Council, where he led that council through a significant period of growth as a major regional centre in Victoria. Clarence does have an enviable reputation as a standout council in Tasmania and Andrew should be very proud of his achievements during that time of tenure. Some of his key achievements, such as the expansion of the sewerage and water to Cambridge, which resulted in significant industrial and commercial growth in the area, and also the implementation of the robust asset management planning and development of their wonderful parks, trail networks, and the implementation of community services. I'm sure that we'd all agree, without a strong executive team, none of those things would be able to be delivered, no matter what our intentions are, and that's to Andrew's credit. There have of course been other significant changes, he's overseen our initiatives in terms of implementing the Kangaroo Bay and key structural changes, including the creation of separate water and sewerage corporations, what we now know as TasWater. Closer to home, he's most recently led the organisation through its most ever, most significant ever IT upgrade. Andrew's also overseen a significant growth period during his time at Clarence, I think when he first came on board, the population was around about 48,000, now it's 57,000 and so the city has grown considerably in his time, and obviously as General Manager, he's had to improve and increase the services provided during that period. His contribution within our community has not just been to local government, he has served on numerous boards across the community, including current roles within Andicen Diocese of Tasmania, MAV Insurances and the Cancer Council of Tasmania. He is, as I'm sure you would agree, held in high regard, not only within Clarence, but within the greater local government community, and I'd like to extend our thanks collectively to Andrew for his dedicated service to council and wish him all the best for his retirement. Thank you.
Thank you Mr Mayor for that, it was a little unexpected, so thank you very much for those kind words. Can I just say that, yeah, it's gonna be a new phase of my life, I suppose, retirement, and so thank you to council, both current and past councillors for the support and faith they've shown in me, I suppose, as the General Manager. One thing I would like to say is, a former mentor of mine, by the name of Peter Sima, who was originally my boss in Bendigo, he went on to be CEO of White Horse, CEO of Federation Square in Melbourne, and for a period, CEO of the City of Sydney, said, gave me one piece of advice that I've always tried to utilise to my advantage, and he said, if ever you end up as a General Manager or a CEO anywhere, he said, the best thing you can do is employ people that are smarter than you. And I said, and I've tried my best, and I think with the staff we have here at Clarence, I've been able to fulfil that piece of advice, because no matter who is the General Manager, they can't do it without the support of a very strong organisation, and I've been grateful and would like to place that on the public record. Thank you.
Second thing I'd like to do, having got back from being away, including to China last night, is table my final report on my visit to China, and that should go into the minutes as well. Just, and I'm happy to take questions, but by way of brief summary, I have found out why things have stagnated around the bay there, and it's basically because Shambrood have been waiting for an educational provider as a partner, so that the whole complex, which is obviously an education precinct as well as a hotel, can go ahead. I can say that the main reason for the delay has been a lack of clarity around who this provider will be, and I can confirm that as a result of our discussions up there, that the Chairman of Shambrood, Mr Ma, is keen to come down here as soon as possible and explore options with the University of Tasmania, and there have already been initial discussions between Shambrood and UTAS in that regard. I also spoke to Mayor Yu, who's the new Mayor of Binjau, and we agreed to pursue discussions that could lead to a renewal of the Memorandum of Understanding between the two cities, which is due for review or otherwise next year. Apart from that, I'm really happy to take any questions. Alderman James.
Thank you Mr Mayor, two questions, firstly, you mentioned about the providers, the service providers, initially there were three, that's my understanding.
Well, no, my understanding now is, and I can expand on this, we'd all be aware that the Premier witnessed the signing of a MOU between TasTAFE and Shambrood in China, pardon me, back in April 2016. It was only in April last year that TasTAFE formally advised, sorry, I've got a problem. Formally advised that they couldn't proceed. When that advice came through, the Coordinator General's Office actually employed a consultant to explore who else might be able to take TasTAFE's place. As a result of that, I understand that there are two possibilities, one of which is UTAS.
Also, on that, there has been discussion about a mainland provider, is that provider still in contention or still able to?
I'm not able to say that they're out of contention, I do know though, that Mr Ma is, well, he advises that he's keen to come down and talk to the Vice Chancellor to explore options there, I don't know whether the other service providers in or out at this point in time.
Another question I have of you is that there is, or there seems to be no building work with regard to the actual building proper and the training facility, and there is a deadline for at least some of the work on the building construction to proceed, and there is a deadline, I understand, towards the end of this year, sometime in about November 2019. Did you receive any assurances from the company whilst you were in Japan, as to whether or not they would be able to meet that deadline, or that extensive work on the building and the training centre would proceed prior to any extension this council may need to give?
While I was up there, I emphasised the matter that we wrote to Shambrood about in the letter, pointing out that they had been extended until November this year, and made that very clear. I was asked whether they could go beyond that, and I said it wasn't within my gift that council would review its progress against that application. What I didn't go into the stage of pointing out, as we know, that council still has a decision to make whether or not, if we're satisfied, we could extend it beyond November if we chose to.
And if the council decides not to extend beyond November 2019, then does council have the option to say that they haven't met the conditions of that development?
I'll ask the General Manager to respond to that.
We could ask them to withdraw from the process.
I'll ask the General Manager to respond.
I think we've actually covered that question previously, Mr Mayor, but yes, my understanding, my recollection is that the contract for sale does include a buyback clause, where certain development thresholds aren't met.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alderman Moller.
Two. First of all, the hospitality school issues were well known before you left, what new information did your trip actually provide?
I think the key to that is the fact that Mr Ma, the Chairman of Shambrood, intends to come down here now as a matter of priority to talk to the Vice Chancellor.
The second part is, the hospitality school issues aside, the building application has not been lodged, and as I understand, it has yet to be, it still hasn't been lodged, can we as a result of this trip get an expectation of when it will be submitted, and so when we can expect that to be submitted as a result of your discussion?
I think and I certainly can understand that Shambrood were unwilling to commit any more money to the project until they'd actually locked in an education partner, and they've undertaken to do best endeavours in that regard, and they are aware of the November timeframe. An answer to your question, no, it's not possible for them to give a definitive time of when building would take place, because their first objective is to secure an education provider.
So, without explanation, that would be then a case of the project itself is still on hold, pending the development of that.
Well, the project's not on hold, they are actually trying their best to get the project moving.
The submission of the building application is on hold, can some, the providing of hospitality?
Well, I'm not sure of what the application, for a building application, the timeframe for that, nothing was discussed in that regard, the priority is to get the project moving by getting this education provider sorted out. Are there any other questions? Alright, so that's where we are, the full report is tabled and will be available in the minutes of this meeting and available to the public. Thank you. Item four is that council notes the workshops conducted on the 3rd of June and the agenda brief on the 14th of June. Thanks Alderman Pierce, do we have a second now? Thanks Alderman Walker. Boys in favour? Against, carried. Item five, are there any declarations of interest of Alderman or close associate? Thank you. Alderman's, item six, tabling of petitions, there's none in the agenda, are there any petitions from the floor? Thank you. Item seven, public question time, item 7.1 is a public question on notice from Kay McFarlane.
Thank you Mr Mayor. The question is printed in the council agenda and it's, can council consider reporting on their climate change initiatives via quarterly social media newsletters or update? What I, in response to that, I can advise that council currently report on our climate change initiatives through the quarterly report, we will look at emerging avenues of trying to reform the community better in relation to what we're doing in relation to climate change and related matters, that may at some point in the future include our social media channels that we operate, but at the moment, we are only reporting that information through the quarterly report, which is made available on our website and through the purview of the council minutes, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Is nothing at item 7.2 or 7.3? Are there any questions from members of the public without notice? If members are speaking, could they please identify name and address please?
My name's Joanne Marsh and I live at 32A King Street, Bell Reef. At the council meeting on the 3rd of December 2018, the General Manager undertook to write to Cricket Tasmania to ask for a report on the structural issues affecting the light towers in October 2018, to reassure the community that their safety had not been compromised at any stage before the towers were repaired. Considering that the undertaking was given at a public meeting in response to a public question without notice, are the contents of the letter and any response received a matter for the public record? If so, where can this information be accessed? If not, could the General Manager please provide an update for this meeting of any outcome from his communication with Cricket Tasmania?
Three, Mr Mayor, I'll have to take all the components of that question on notice and provide an answer, and we will provide a written response to Mrs Marsh.
And in the minutes for the next meeting?
And, yes, I'll bring it forward to the next meeting, because someone else will.
There's another question, Mr Marsh.
My name's Victor Marsh, I live at 32A King Street, Bell Reef. These are photos of families attending the junior soccer at Kangaroo Bay Oval on Saturday the 15th of June. So my question is, bear in mind that safety is the law, when did the council's community safety officer assess the number of persons attending the junior soccer event at Kangaroo Bay on Saturday mornings, with the intention of considering the need for a traffic management plan for Kangaroo Bay Drive, to provide for safe and efficient traffic movement, considering the age and numbers of children involved?
Thank you, Mr Marsh. Mayor, I'll ask our traffic engineer to undertake a review of the traffic arrangements down there.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the public? Thank you. Item eight, deputations by members of the public, General Manager?
Yes, sorry, Mr Mayor, I'm still walking. Yes, we have two deputations this evening, the first is Angela Coop from Lindisfarne, who wishes to address council in relation to the issue of homelessness, if you can come forward please.
As you're coming forward, I need to remind you that there's an only opportunity for three minutes, and there'll be a warning tone at two and a half minutes.
I have time, but...
Thank you. The same rule applies to all of us when we speak as well.
Good evening Mayor Chipman, Deputy Mayor Chung and all the Alderman present here today. Tonight I wish to present a very personal and private story about a member of my family who was once homeless. Leon was a man who was brought up in Rose Bay with his loving family, he attended Lindisfarne State School, Rose Bay High School and was proud of his eastern shore heritage. In the winter of 2009, somewhere between the 12th and the 24th of June, which is this week 10 years ago, Leon was found dead by a friend at the bottom of Mount Wellington, where he laid deceased for many days. Leon was 59 years of age, vulnerable and homeless in Hobart. I would like to read to you an extract from the coroner's investigation into his death that was sent to his family, which including the following findings. Leon died at a date unable to be determined in bushland in South Hobart. His body was found collapsed on a tent at a camp bush site. I find that Leon died as a result of probable hypothermia. Significant contributing factors were chronic alcoholism, homelessness and a history of seizures. Can you ever imagine yourself as the father, mother, brother, sister or the child of a person whose death in a small population state, such as Tasmania in the 21st century, regardless of the situation, has been determined to be caused by hypothermia? We all know that Leon's last days, he would have been feeling cold, sick, scared and alone. Left in his Kmart tent was a cold damp box of photos, which held memories of his life and went with him everywhere. Leon was given a proper funeral by his family and laid to rest fittingly alongside his parents. Over Leon's homeless years, he did on many occasions seek and receive assistance from all the men shelters here in Hobart, but it was obvious to anyone that knew him, that he didn't want to be bothersome to anyone anymore, and he existed with no self-worth, no hope, and he took the only option readily available to live in suburban bushland, out of the way in the eye of people. If a small simple accommodation had been permanently available to Leon, if given the option and the choice, somewhere warm, somewhere he felt no judgment, or even if it was just for the winter, somewhere we could have a cold shower and feel clean enough, that if he was feeling sick or unwell, he could visit the doctor with some dignity, maybe he had not had passed away, in the most tragic circumstances that he did. Over the past few days, the state government have been quick to state their intention to extend funding to existing providers to help ease the crisis. Alderman Bromley is correct in stating that the local councils and state governments need to look at ways together to increase the housing supply with strategic and well-coordinated alliance putting the politics aside. It doesn't need to be big or complicated, but a simple warm shelter for everyone this winter would be a great start, and moreover, it may save a life and at least give hope. Thank you.
Very much Angela, for sharing that story with us.
Next speaker, Mr Mayor, is Richard Gilbert, in his capacity as rear commodore of the Bell Reef, come forward please.
Richard Gilbert, 803 Acton Row. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity of addressing me tonight in relation to the redevelopment of the Bell Reef Yacht Club. My name's Richard Gilbert, I'm the vice commodore of the Bell Reef Yacht Club. We've been working on this development now for an excess of eight years, but unfortunately, five years ago, we were nearly ready to lodge a DA, but couldn't do so because we were waiting to get crown consent, and that wasn't forthcoming until such time that the development on the hotel site was known to be what was happening. The Bell Reef Yacht Club was established in 1926, we have an excess of 900 members, 167 births in our current marina. The club over multiple years has had many redevelopments to achieve what we have today, and we're endeavouring to do this redevelopment mainly due to the dilapidating state of the marina, which was initially built back in the 1970s. The intention is that if we can get this development up and completed, that within the next 10 years, it will then complete a multimillion dollar redevelopment of the clubhouse. As I said, the development has come about due to the dilapidation of the marina, the new development will incorporate an additional 47 births. We're not increasing the footprint tremendously, but we are getting better utilisation out of the area that we've got to get our boats in. We're also increasing because of the demand of having bigger boats into the area, and there's a lot more people becoming involved in boating. Part of our development also takes into advantage the proposed new public pier, originally Bell Reef Yacht Club developed the concept of this public pier and then working with Clarence Council, gave them that information for that to get to where it is today. This marina will have the services equivalent to any marina as good as anywhere in the world, we're hoping to provide services to our members and visiting boats from both interstate and overseas, that will in turn increase the amount of people in the Bell Reef Village itself. It will also incorporate more people in the area of local boats, that also assists with the local businesses. The development also includes the redevelopment of the gravel car park, which is a bit of an eyesore in the area, and we'll bring that connection together all the way from Rosney College right round through to the new public pier. This will improve public access for the general public, cycleways, mummies for the kids for the prams and all that sort of thing. Along with this is also landscape developments proposed that will increase the beautification of the area in general. In closing, for the club to continue, we need to be able to get this development up. We are a significant player in Bell Reef and have been for many years, and want to do so in the future. It's not just for our members what we're doing, but it is also improving the capacity for the greater, greater public. So yeah, I just wanted to put that forward and thank you very much for the opportunity of doing so. Thank you.
Item nine, motion on notice, Alderman Longley.
Thank you Mr Mayor, I move the motion standing in my name.
Do we have a second please? Alderman Pierce. Alderman Longley.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'm sure we'd all agree that the first step in solving any problem is recognising there is one. We know that there are an estimated 120 people sleeping rough in Hobart. We know that there's an estimated 174 people who go as homeless here in the City of Clarence. And we also know from service providers in recent days that I've been talking with, that there's also the working homeless amongst us, those people that whilst employed, are unable to enter the home or rental markets. Unquestionably, this is a multifaceted and complex issue with no easy fix, because if there was, I'm sure it would be fixed by now. Mr Mayor, it is appropriate to congratulate the Hobart City Council on taking a leadership role on this important issue. In shining a light on the housing homelessness crisis in the Greater Hobart Area, and convening the housing summit this Thursday, it is hoped that not only can we address the immediate crisis situation, but also, working collaboratively in a well-coordinated and strategic way, plan for the medium and long term, so this dire situation never rears its ugly head again. Mr Mayor, Clarence City Council has a role to play in the broader Hobart community, and in my view, we're due bound to accept the invitation to actively participate in Thursday's summit. We must not only work with our local government peers, but also with the other two tiers of government as well. We have to all work together on this. It really is incumbent on all three levels of government to step up and provide all necessary resources to assist those frontline service providers who deal with this issue each and every day. In today's mercury, there were two articles that underscored one of the root causes of this issue, and that is the phenomenal growth in population the Greater Hobart Area is experiencing. So in light of this, we must plan for the future. I think by and large that Clarence has a really good job in supporting residential investment, but what else could and should we be doing? Simply put, we need to increase housing supply, this is a basic supply and demand issue. Mr Mayor, if there is an emergency in one of the councils in the Hobart area, then it's up to all of us to look at ways that we can assist, and that is what the housing summit is all about. From a local government perspective, immediate action should be taken to facilitate sensible and sustainable development throughout the Greater Hobart Area. A one obvious area that we need to seriously look at is increasing the level of residential density throughout southern Tasmania. Mr Mayor, the question we ought to ask ourselves is, is it acceptable in the Greater Hobart Area in 2019, for any one person to be sleeping rough? Is it acceptable for any one person to be homeless? Surely we can, and we must do better. My hope is that Clarence City Council can partner with neighbouring councils and working hand in glove with the state and federal governments, play our part in addressing and solving this problem. Mr Mayor, one person sleeping rough is one person too many, now is the time for action.
Thank you. Alderman Pierce.
I thank Alderman Longley for that speech, I thought it was absolutely fantastic. One of the things that I agree with, everything he said wholeheartedly, because one person living rough is too many, but we've also got to look at this housing summit, one of the frustrating things I'm told continually, we have houses here in Clarence, in areas where people move out, and that house is still vacant three months later. Why, I have no idea. If they want to do maintenance of it, surely, surely they can get a person or family in and worry about the maintenance issues. and worry about the maintenance issues later on. But this is happening too many times in our own city and I dare say it's happening in other areas as well. Now, I've had dealings with homeless people and one of the frustrating things that they tell me is there's so many organisations now they've got to go to because you, you get knocked back here, you've got to go there, there and everywhere else. And I think if somewhere along the line, the summit may have something like the old housing department so many years ago, where you go to one and, and you, and then they can go to others, but under the one body. Why we're sending homeless people to so many different organisations, to me is just ridiculous. If it could be held under the one umbrella and then go out that way, that's fine. But we're just making it harder and harder and harder. So Mayor, I certainly support this motion and I hope it passes unanimously.
Alderman Molder.
Yes, Mr Mayor, I also support the motion. It's, um, it, it's a crisis motion about a crisis, but in fact it talks about medium and longer term solutions. Now, I think the housing crisis, I think this has been many years in the making. And, you know, I was a policeman in this area some thirty odd years ago. And it was an issue then with people sleeping rough up in the, in the back blocks. Some by choice, but, and, and usually during the summer I might add, very few by choice in the winter, but they were there. As the deputation we've heard this morning, you know, this has been a crisis for at least ten years and probably more. And it's an annual event. Last year's solution was around the showgrounds where the people were camped at the, at the old showgrounds. And they eventually had to be moved on, might I say, by a local council operating under, you know, its auspices and, and the need to move people on. But as a crisis requires urgent attention, I cannot do much better than perhaps to reflect what a Belgrade resident, Mr Hall, wrote in today's paper, too much talk with little action. Get container homes, collect unused caravans, open landed up, open boarded up public housing, cut the long queues, cut the long lunches that only discuss the problem but not solve it. All while waiting, let's, um, let, let's, let tents, let tents be pitched inside Hobart City, the empty Hobart City Hall. Or could I add my favourite, which was to get a, is to have a cruise ship, a decommissioned cruise ship that could tie up to the wharf, provide emergency housing in, in secure accommodation, I might say, and whose diesel electric generators will provide an adequate backup for the next time we have a power crisis. We've also got the debt of a hundred and seventy five, a hundred and fifty seven million that the Commonwealth, that we owe to the Commonwealth, which every year we take the interest payments out of, which then reduces the amount of money available for housing in Tasmania. This was a loan arranged by Minister Lawellin, but no government of either colour has ever bothered to even try to repay it. And consequently, it sits there every year, our contribution from the Commonwealth is reduced by this amount. The crisis is being addressed by the state government, but we need things to do in the medium to long term. And here is where I think council can start to help. We can start with, you know, and, and in that regard, I'd like to foreshow perhaps at the next meeting, two motions. One is to remove the greatest impediment to the supply of land and the cost of land in this, in, in, in southern Tasmania. And that's the artificial urban growth boundary. Perhaps this might be the first issue for the Greater Hobart Committee when it gets up and running. And the second one is, I think we need to have a look at our planning scheme to see where and when and what style we can have for high-density head of residences, residential living such as apartments.
Other speakers. Alderman Youngton.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, I'd like to agree with your last point there, Alderman Molder, about the, we need to really look at our planning laws and our rules and regulations around what we can and can't do. I mean, we spend every, you know, we're coming in, we argue about whether someone can build a house that's got R M square meters of open space versus twenty square meters. And this, this overregulation and the, and the amount of, it just shows you the amount of time that we're putting to trying to define and regulate everything that we do. Which not only includes, it increases the cost of, of, of actually building a house and increases the, you know, the housing crisis in that space. But it also means that, you know, there's less supply coming on, on strength. We're spending so much time telling what, telling people what they can't do. I mean, the urban growth boundary certainly needs to be addressed there. But I mean, a classic example I was thinking about today was the payment looking at for rugby in, oh sorry, Rugby Transmin Peninsula. There was nothing on there for high-density apartment-type housing in that that we looked at at the moment. I mean, you think about, when was the last time we built an apartment block on the earth since short? I mean, there was some in Alma Street, there's some in, you know, on Howard Beach near there. But since then, nothing in the last, you know, certainly in the last thirty or forty years that I can remember. So certainly looking at that side of things and making it easier, identifying a developer or a location, where that might be a, an approach to, to, you know, help things in the medium to longer term. But I certainly think this, you know, saying that every house has to be, you know, as a three bedroom, you know, you know, the block sizes are limited. And I, I think we're just over-regulating things and I think that's a big area that we as a council certainly need to look at allowing, you know, increased density of housing and simplifying not only the, the time it takes to get things done, but also the cost involved with, you know, all the different reports we've got to do these days with sunlight and environmental and, and a whole range of different things. And that's where the costs come from and we could certainly see it coming and those sort of costs all add up for everyone. But I certainly think that there seems that we can do as a council. The other thing is, I think the crisis accommodation is something a bit out of our control, but where, where we can help that certainly, I think we should be looking at that. But the other thing is, there's a lot of crises out there these days and government can't always fix them. But certainly acknowledging that something's there is the first step. And hopefully through some decision-making, we can get some things to change. But certainly supportive of the intent.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Excuse me, I also support this motion. But one thing I would like to put on record is that Clarence City does not actually have a shelter. And we do need some immediate shelter for our homeless. Thank you.
Yes, I congratulate Alderman Bromley on the intent of this motion. I think we need to recognise that the issue of housing and particularly homelessness is complex. And you don't necessarily solve it just by providing more housing. We have to look at the, the reasons behind this rather than just the symptoms. I think it's also a mistake to conflate providing more apartments with addressing affordable housing. I think that those are two separate things. So I don't think the planning laws necessarily stop us getting that right mix. And we know that this has been an issue for a while. I wonder if you can call it a crisis when it's been going for ten years. As Alderman Molder points out, I do recall that in the two thousand and fourteen state election, a number of parties went to the election with very strong housing policies, saying this is a really serious issue that we need to deal with. The party that won government in two thousand and fourteen didn't have such a policy. Very soon after that election, it was, oh my goodness, there's a housing crisis, we must have a summit. And a summit was held at that point in two thousand and fourteen. And plans were made to address the crisis. And we now find, after that government has been re-elected and in power for another year, that we're still having these summits and still not actually achieving any progress on this. So I congratulate Alderman Bromley on the intent of the motion. I think there are a lot of other things that we should be considering, like how we deal with homeless people in Clarence, how we deal with the issues that lead people to become homeless. Alderman Pierce's point about the difficulty of government, the way that governments, successive government policies have made it very hard for people to access services. And these are some of our most vulnerable citizens who are not great at dealing with bureaucracy and we make so many hoops for them to jump through. So I think there are a number of factors that we need to consider, but you know, this is a good start.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I support Alderman Bromley's motion also. I think it's really important to note that as far as housing is concerned, there is a spectrum. So there is a spectrum with homelessness. There is then the supported accommodation aspect. There is then rental and there is then ownership. So when we actually talk about housing and homelessness, we have to look at that whole spectrum. And certainly, as a number of the Aldermen have said, we need to look in terms of the short term and the medium to long term. As far as Clarence is concerned, I actually believe that we need to determine the extent of homelessness as Alderman Warren has said here in Clarence. And we have been provided with information in relation to Adelaide's zero, for functional zero programme, where they are actually getting volunteers to determine the number and type of homeless people within their community. And that is one aspect that we could be looking at. But we need to actually determine the number of homeless people within Clarence. I also realise that what Alderman Bromley is looking at is how we can actually support homelessness over the Greater Hobart area. In the medium to long term, the state government actually has the affordable housing strategy. And just recently, in March this year, they announced stage two of an action plan. This is looking at more long term. And that is to be supported as well. Hobart City Council actually has a framework and a policy related to housing and homelessness. And that's a strategy that has gone from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and nineteen is, ends up now up for review. And that looks at the roles and responsibilities of that council in relation to planning, parks and civic spaces, city action and connection, community development and strategic partnerships. I think that is worthwhile for us to look at as far as having some sort of framework by which we can work after we actually have the evidence. And I realise that these are not short-term solutions, they're medium to long-term solutions. One of the aspects in relation to planning that none of the other Aldermen have touched on at this point in time is short-term accommodation. There is an issue in relation to short-term accommodation and the number of residences that are available for people to actually live in. So we need to look at that. The city deal. The city deal actually has an aspect of it related to housing. And we need to really press the federal government in relation to the support as far as homelessness and that whole housing spectrum. I think it's really important to note, as they've said in Adelaide, that this is not a government problem. It is a problem for the whole community. It is about residents, it is about business actually being involved as well. And for instance, in Adelaide, the Bendigo Bank has been incredibly supportive in relation to look at, looking at initiatives. So I support Alderman Bromley's motion wholeheartedly and hope that we can get some short-term solutions as well as the longer term. Thank you.
Thank you, I'll be brief, Mr Mayor. When it comes to the council's role in this, probably number one thing we have to acknowledge from the start, there isn't a silver bullet, there just isn't. Where can we probably provide the most value? It's in the context around the issue that is housing. And that is interrelated, but not exclusively the issue around homelessness. So obviously, increasing supply is going to be helping with those people that find themselves not able to, to rent but otherwise, that, that where they otherwise wouldn't, otherwise have in, in times past. But around, around homelessness, the best thing we can be doing is, is, is not so much probably talking, but listening. Listening to those that are out there in the streets. Listening in particular to the many great providers that have been in this space. And they'll tell you the complexities around homelessness and the different types of situations that arise. So, you know, as I said, I'm hoping from a local government perspective, more than anything tomorrow's a listen fest. Sorry, this, this summit later this week's a listen fest, not so much of a talk fest.
Alderman Edmond.
I've been thinking about how I would make a contribution this evening. And I think Alderman Walker, you just, I think you might have heard me pick my pen because I completely agree about listening. There's so many people who sleep in warm homes who are convening talk fest at the moment about housing and talking about all the stuff about, you know, supply and demand and density and things like that. And for Christ's sake, there's people who are actually homeless and I think that has to be the focus of the crisis talks. So yeah, I find the talk fest environment very frustrating and I just hope that people actually get their hands dirty and will tackle the homelessness issue primarily before we move on to our medium and long term plans.
Alderman Bromley, write a reply.
Thank you, Mr Mayor and thank you colleagues. The last thing the community needs is another talk fest. And we need to start seeing action. And there's absolutely no doubt, I think that that is something that we would all wholeheartedly support. I've, it's been enjoyable tonight, it's been instructive tonight listening to the contribution of colleagues. And more importantly, I want to hear from the community too and those experts, those people in the frontline, exactly what is, what it's going to take to get this, to get this crisis or this problem fixed. I mean, when we leave this place load this evening, Mr Mayor, return to our respective homes, jumping out of beds with our hot water bottles or electric blankets, we know that there are Tasmanians who are not as fortunate as us. The Bureau of Meteorology tells us that it'll be three degrees tonight. And we know that there will be those that will not have a roof over their heads, will not have a secure and safe place to sleep. People just like Leon, whose sad story was so illiterately presented by Miss Kurtzelli today. And I know, Mr Mayor, I commend the motion.
Bromley's motion, proactive steps to address the housing and homeless crisis, all those in favour? Karid Yunanusli, thank you. Alderman James.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr Mayor. The motion that I'd like council to consider is in fact for the galleries on the display board up there.
Hope we could call for a second.
I think that would be very good.
Thank you, Alderman Molder.
Mr Mayor, a number of us have received a communication from a resident. And it's also been discussed in the community about the concern of lack of fencing at the rear of the Anzac Park Memorial in Anzac Park Lindisfarne. It's become very popular on a weekend in particular for families to have picnics, for them, to the children to meet in that vicinity of the cenotaph. And because of the dangerous nature of the cliff that actually is the reverse of that particular cenotaph, it is becoming a problem and I think council needs to at least consider taking some action in relation to it. And this motion is spelling out that before the consultant completes the development of a city of Clarence Top Risk Assessment Plan, council considers, as a matter of urgency, the installation of temporary fencing in that open area on the cliff face at the rear of the cenotaph at Anzac Park Lindisfarne. This particular area is of concern. And there is a number of operators that would actually be able to install some temporary fencing. And I could mention one of those, which is widely known throughout the Hobart area, T F H Hire, which enables fencing, secure, security fencing to be erected in a very stable nature. And that could be in fact installed in relation to the area behind the cenotaph. Council has been very considerate about safety over the years. And for one, in one instance, you know, we had the relocation of the Belgrade Beach Car Park. you know, we had the relocation of the Bell Reef Beach car park to the car park in the vicinity of the Brunson Arena. And one of the primary issues that was discussed at that time, this was the former council, was in fact the safety that required the council to hire a consultant, and the consultant's report was that there were safety issues, excuse me, associated with that for the beachgoers and the park users. And council did spend a substantial amount of money for the safety purposes and reasons to relocate the car park from Bell Reef Beach to the area, excuse me, adjacent to the Brunson Arena. This is asking council to consider this matter, and by taking the necessary action, it would in some ways go towards the comment that was made by a member of the community inasmuch as he said, "I suggest council members read the coroner's recommendations to the Kingborough Council over the death of a teenager who climbed the fence before falling." And even though the circumstances are a little bit different because the land on which the fence is on private land, nevertheless, there is a council walkway which the council has accepted its responsibility to maintain that. So by the very nature of that fence that perhaps wasn't to appropriate standards under the particular reasons that were addressed under the coroner's report, then I think that what we ought to be doing is at least consider some temporary fencing at the rear of the cenotaph, because the cliff face drop is quite substantial, it's a thirty metre drop, and I think by taking some action in relation to temporary fencing, then we would at least be able to say that by the time the consultant's report is done, and from the general manager's, excuse me, comments on the base of this agenda, the consultant is to undertake a risk assessment of the park cliff face, and she will be in Clarence on the fifth of July two thousand and nineteen. Excuse me, my throat. I see council support.
I think it's appropriate that we manage the risk while a risk assessment works out if there is a risk that needs to be managed.
Other speakers. Alderman Ewington.
Look, I think personally, I mean, you know, there's risks everywhere out there, and I mean, look, I'd certainly hate to think that anything might happen, you know, as we discussed the other day, luckily no one's had anything happen yet, we're doing the risk management, I just think it's a bit premature to go out and spend money on a fence that might end up being not the most, the one that's got the highest priority to construct or build, depending on what the risk management strategy comes back. And, you know, I mean, there's a thing out there called personal responsibility as well, where I think we all have to exercise that in our life, and I don't think, you know, running around putting fences in every possible place is necessarily a wise thing for us to do as a council with other people's money. If there was a demonstrator of risk happening right now, I'd certainly be supporting it, but I think it's a bit premature to be putting a temporary fence up at the moment, especially when we've got this risk management plan coming back in in the next few weeks, and then we'll be able to make an informed decision on which is the best approach, and certainly whether there's any other priorities that should take precedence, so I might be supporting the motion.
Look, unlike Alderman Ewington, I will be supporting this motion, only because, now, when I looked at that, I thought they're doing a risk assessment on the fifth of July. Now, the fact is, if I was getting that report on the sixth of July, I totally agree with you, totally agree with you. But we have no idea when that report's coming back. I've walked around this track because, like everybody else, we got emails about it, and there's certain parts that, yes, I think there is a bit of a risk. Now, I don't know when this report's coming back, sure, it shouldn't take that long, but I know it's not going to arrive straight away. And there's three spots there that I really don't like, and I do agree with Alderman James, a bit of temporary fencing, you know, I don't think is going to go astray at all. You know, I know a lot of people are using that track, and it only takes one lack of concentration by a parent, and a kid's gone over the edge, and that's why, look, I support it. If someone could tell me the exact date this report was coming back to council and we could get straight on with it, that's fine, but at the moment, no one knows when that report's going to come back.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, we've been advised in writing that the risk assessor will actually start the work on the fifth of July, or the proposed start is the date, is the fifth of July, which is, from my memory, Friday, three weeks. It is going to be a site inspection of six sites across the community, so that there can be established a sample of the risk factors a person may experience when visiting Clarence's coastlines. And each site assessment will include a summary of the likelihood and consequence factors and a recommendation as to the type of mitigation or avoidance of risk. And then what will occur from there is to actually prepare a procedure which can then be used to look at all of these types of sites across our municipality. And I have started this with the important aspect being a consistent approach. So this is not the only cliff in Clarence. We are looking at doing a risk assessment to get a consistent approach. So I think that's a really important factor when we are looking at Alderman James's motion. I also note that Alderman James's motion says council considers, so that doesn't necessarily mean that tonight we actually make a decision as to whether or not we have temporary fencing in this particular situation or not. At the briefing on Friday, I actually asked the question as to what does it mean by temporary fencing, what type of fencing? These are aspects which, in essence, have not been made clear, and the idea of temporary, what does temporary mean? Does it mean for two weeks? Does it mean for two months? Does it mean for two years? These are aspects that I'm not clear on, and I actually believe, as Alderman Ewington has said, we are being premature if this motion is actually for us to make a decision on having temporary fencing tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Walker.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's a site that many of us are familiar with, I certainly grew up riding a BMX bike along that edge, doing scouting stuff on the side of it, I might have even had a few sherbets on New Year's Eve nineteen ninety-eight when I saw the clock tick twelve. I'm not comfortable with this knee-jerk approach. It's interesting for me that there are people in council that have been here for decades, and this seems to be rearing its head right in this instant, and with a report impending the instantaneous approaches to whack up scaffolding all around this site. And it's, you know, culturally, it's Anzac Park's, it's name, it's got, you know, it's an area of high cultural sensitivity as well, I don't think there's been any engagement with groups such as the RSL or the other groups in the area, and they just might find a big fence whacked up. There's also the risks that just plonking a big fence poses, because that can, in some cases, actually increase the risk, you know, if you're cycling along, close to one of those fences, you can get clipped and go over. And we don't have any veracity around the merits of what a safety fence should be or what it's going to be of a temporary nature. This isn't the way that council should be going about its business. I also, got to say, I'm not unsympathetic with the points that Alderman Ewington raised either.
Alderman James.
Mayor, I think the Clarence City Council, like Kingborough Council and any other councils for that matter, have a duty of care not only to its residents, but to its citizens and the Greater Hobart area who actually frequent these popular areas. And we've already made, and I've already made the comment in relation to the safety issues that were quite prominent in relation to the Bell Reef Beach car park relocation to the Brunson Arena. So, look, the question here is that, is council going to wait X number of months to address this matter? If the council decides that they will not support the motion just before the chair, then we will have to probably wait a lot longer, because this is one of six areas that's been identified by the consultant, and for that matter, there hasn't been a list of priorities in relation to it. In other words, this particular area, or this particular problem here, as I see it, is in fact, may be listed well and truly down the pecking order, and therefore it may not have the intention of what it ought to receive in relation to the safety of people. I think this is something that we need to be aware of, we need to address it, and by the very nature of some temporary fencing, then I think it's sending a message to the community that the council cares, it's very much supportive of being in a situation of having a duty of care, and I see council support.
Those in favour? Against? The motion is lost. Moving on to reports from outside bodies, ten point one, single and joint authorities, first of Southern Tasmanian Council's authority, there is a quarterly report of the thirty first of March to be received before seeking a motion in that regard. I'd also like to table a report from STCA in regard to the completion of a regional climate change initiative project, and in particular, how it's impacted on Clarence. So I'll table that and ask that it be circulated to all the Aldermen, but apart from that, I'd seek a motion that the quarterly report be received. Thank you, Alderman Chong. Second, please. Thank you, Alderman Kendy. Question, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Carried unanimously, thank you. In regard to the copying refused disposal site joint authority, there's the quarterly report to be considered in closed session, but there's a quarterly summary there as well. Do you want to add to that, Alderman Walker? Okay. Thank you. I have nothing to report for Tas Water. Moving on to ten point two, reports from council and special committees and other representing bodies. Are there any other reports?
Yes, Mr Rand. I'd like to table the Alma's Activity Centre Management Committee meeting for the fourteenth of May and the eleventh of June.
It's a matter of where the table is. Are there any other reports? Thank you. Item eleven, reports of officers, eleven point one, that the information in the weekly briefing reports, the twenty-seventh of May, third and tenth of June noted. Have someone moved that? Thank you, Alderman Chong, seconded Alderman Peers, I think. Are there any questions? Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. The weekly briefing report of the third of June and the Bell Reef Oval Transport Plan Committee and resident representative. My question through you to, I believe, Mr Graham. Mr Graham, the resident representative position, as you've referred to in the weekly briefing report, or as Mr Nelson has, said that the advertisement's been placed in the Mercury and nominations close on the first of July. My question is, will there be a briefing with that successful applicant to that position, particularly with regard to the changes that have occurred and the attachment in relation to the planning appeal decision, which in fact covered a number of issues, including the safety, et cetera, and the traffic plan in that area? So will there be a sort of one-on-one discussion with the new residence representative, and also will that information regarding the extensive consultation and the results of the planning appeal decision which was handled through consent be addressed in the discussions with the new representative?
I'll pass it on to Mr Nelson, who did the briefing report on this matter.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, the process of any induction for a new nominee will be handled by the committee, but I'd expect it to include a full induction about the background and operation and activity of that committee, plus the requirements that exist under the DA that was approved by consent.
And the other matter is in relation to twenty-seventh of May two thousand and nineteen, State Growth Vulnerable Road User Programme for the nineteen twenty grant programme. I think I've got it right this time, Mr Graham, in relation to this matter. Mr Graham, it refers to, amongst other things, that Clarence City Council was unsuccessful with its bid for funding for the vulnerable road user programme, and in particular for the Wellington Street Richmond roadworks. Was that the only submission put forward for consideration? And if not, was there any consideration given to the Victoria Esperant section, one-way road from the port, well, actually from, I think it's Dylan, around to Bell Reef Beach? Was there any, was that one of those roads that would have been considered, or was it just the Wellington Street that was submitted?
Through you, Mr Mayor, the Wellington Street one was the only one submitted of the projects that was coming forward in terms of the next annual operating plan.
Any other questions on Alderman Blomley?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, the weekly briefing report of the tenth of June, I took the reference to number two, application to Tasman Highway, is a memo received, written by Mr Graham, a copy of his letter to state roads, and then their response to it on the third of May, where I note that they were advised by Mr Shane Gregory that the Tasmanian government has committed eight million dollars, split equally across the three regions of the state, for city gateway improvements. This funding commenced in, oh, it says twenty twelve to twenty-two, I forget the time, I speak. Yeah, I must have, yeah, so much to speak, from twenty-one to twenty-two, continues through to two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four. We've got some action, but...
Your questions, eh?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's probably more for noting, Mr Mayor, but I've got to say I'm far from satisfied with this sort of response.
Are there any other comments on the weekly briefing reports? In that case, I'll put the motion that we note the information in them, all those in favour. Carried unanimously. Eleven point two, dealing with petitions, eleven point two point one, petition for the East Side Squash Centre officer's report. Thanks, Alderman Blomley, do we have a second? Thank you, Alderman Kendy. You wish to speak to the motion?
Oh, I think it's fairly straightforward, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Other speakers? Thank you. The motion is that we note the petition and request a further report. All those in favour? Carried unanimously, thank you. Now, advise that council intends to set as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act, and the first item, eleven point three point one, is a development application at lot ten, lot two, Ten Shaw Street, Richmond. If I have a mover and a second, please. Thanks, Alderman Chong, do we have a second? Thanks, Alderman Ewington. Alderman Chong, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'm support the officer's recommendation.
Okay. Two, any other speakers? Okay, so I'll put the motion which is for approval subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point three point two is a development application for numerous properties in Bell Reef concerning... BelReeve concerning the Marina redevelopment. I'll have someone move in se- thank you, Alderman Blomley, seconded Alderman Newington. Would you like to speak to the motion?
I don't think there's any need, Mr Mayor, except to say that the presentation by the Vice Commodore was, uh, was, uh, was greatly appreciated tonight, but I'm also aware of the, uh, even before I came to this place, he made of work that the BelReeve Yacht Club has done with community consultation and, uh, as the Vice Commodore said, this has been, uh, uh, over a decade's worth of work here and I think the finished product here is something that will, um, set the club up and indeed be a, an added facility of some note for our city.
Newington?
I just want to reinforce, um, Alderman Blomley's commentary. I mean, I've been growing up in the area and seeing the, uh, the bay not cha- not change too much over the years. I think it's a, it's a great addition to see it go into the next level in terms of the, uh, the added infrastructure that the, um, the yachters need to, to store and look after their boats. But I think the, um, the other benefits are going to flow from this in terms of the, um, the community recreation, the public open space, the ability to probably interact i- in a community setting, I think is certainly going to add a lot of, um, a lot to the whole area. And I, uh, I think it's a, you know, it's a fantastic development, knowing how hard it is to get a house built or something like that, to go through a process to, to get all of this worked out. To this point, I'm, I'm sure there's a lot of work gone into it and I, I think, um, we should certainly be supportive of this. It's a, um, it'll be a great addition to our community.
Other speakers? Alderman Mulder?
Uh, Mr Mayor, I'll, um, I'll also be supporting the, uh, the motion as put. There are a couple of issues that have been raised at various times and I'll probably start with the, uh, the least first. Um, and that is that my understanding is, is that the land for the car park is owned by, or sometimes owned by, owned by the BelReeve Yacht Club, but will be leased to council. What was the problem?
There is a partial, parcel, part of the car park, I think, is being, the process of being transferred to the yacht club from Crown, formerly Crown Land. It's been, uh, subject to long-term lease. There is another parcel of the Crown Land there which is effectively what I'll call part of the gravel area, which is Crown Land being transferred to council and council has received a grant to undertake the upgrade of that car park.
Second issue relates to the, um, to the slipyard. The slipyard has been a longstanding feature of the BelReeve Yacht Club, but I think as Kangaroo Bay has changed, I think it's an industrial site that is inappropriate to what really is our commercial, our social, uh, what we're now putting as the jewel and our social crown, if you like. Um, so it's an area for entertainment, um, social activities, um, and this industrial area doesn't fit. But, um, though, though I can't do anything about it this time, I'm also advised that the long-term prospects for the slipyard are somewhat slim, so some of our representatives can take some comfort from that. A lot they've got to do with the fact is that, uh, yachts are getting bigger and industrial workplaces are having ever increasing tightening standards, which this slipyard will have trouble meeting in the future. So there's a bit of light in the horizon for that. My last point, um, and also raised is navigability. Since navigability, if there is such a word, the point is that, um, at the current, it's proposed that a future ferry yacht service, which the government absolutely declares will be up and running very soon, um, will be on the private wharf, um, near the hotel. As part of all those land deals, um, we're going to build a pier and I really think it's about time that if you have a look at the diagram, that's quite a narrow pinch area for ferries to come in and out of. And it would be possible, I would like to think that, um, we might have a second thought about whether that pier that we're building as a breakwater with, um, some social thing really ought to be, um, factored and changed into being a ferry wharf so that, um, you know, we don't have those navigational issues around the Marina.
Thanks, Alderman Mulder. James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It was interesting to note the Vice Commodore's comments this evening in relation to how long this particular matter has been on the, on the drawing board. And he mentioned eight years and then of course, some years ago, the old council, we met as a group and we had a meeting with the, um, uh, the consultant at the time and also at the BelReeve Yacht Club facility. And what was being proposed then is quite different to what is being proposed today. Now, the, the question I have here is that it's great to see the development proceed in Kangaroo Bay. But the timing and also to the nature of having this sort of rush-through on the basis that we haven't had a, another meeting with the BelReeve Yacht Club people to explain what is being proposed this time. It's substantially different to what was being discussed five years ago and we had an opportunity to ask questions and discuss it. And in this particular instance, it has been sort of, um, fast-tracked in order so that we can give it the tick of approval. The other matter that needs to be considered in relation to that is that the west, I call it the west wing or that extension, will actually be in very, very close proximity to the BelReeve Hotel. And Alderman Mulder mentioned in relation to the navigation within that particular area, it's going to be a very tight fit, particularly in relation to, uh, not only if by some chance a small ferry can actually navigate or manoeuvre through there, but also to the actual basis of any other particular vessel being able to try to make it through that very narrow net. The other comment that I want to make is in relation to the, uh, the, the extension to the slipyard and also to the very nature of how containment of pollution from the vessels and those that have been slipped and their hulls cleaned on the existing, uh, slipway. Because there has already been a number of photos taken of the, um, sullage and et cetera that has been, um, obviously part and parcel of the cleaning of the hulls of the vessel. And there's no containment, as I understand it, in relation to the, uh, well, to that pollution that's absolutely, uh, not been contained and obviously makes its way into the, into the river. The other thing is that the, the minister of Rockliffe has mentioned about the BelReeve to Lindisfarne Ferry. Now, presumably, once the hotel, if, when the hotel or training centre is built, there is going to be provision for a pier and that will be, as I understand it, the actual ferry wharf for the Hobart to BelReeve Ferry Service. And already it's a tight fit and also to go up, maneuver around the west wing, which is a new extension, and also on those other three, um, uh, piers of the extension to the, uh, BelReeve Yacht Club's proposal. You've got another extension out into Kangaroo Bay. So you've got a lot of congestion and a lot of difficulty, as I would submit, in being able to maneuver around those, uh, piers and also to be able to get into the, uh, to where the, the new ferry terminal will be. It would have been great if the state government had have made a contribution in relation to the debate at this stage so that we could be assured that if they are going to and they have said that they will support a BelReeve to Hobart ferry service, that in fact it will be, and if it's on the basis of being at the new pier where the hotel, proposed hotel and training centre is being done, then in fact, will that pose some problems in relation to a viable ferry service operating out of what I think is a congested, uh, BelReeve, Kangaroo Bay development? I think there are a number of problems...
Mr Mayor, I have a point of clarification.
Um, I, I think there is some confusion that I, about where it is proposed at the BelReeve to Hobart Ferry will, um, will tie up in Kangaroo Bay. I was of the view that it was outside the hotel. It seems like Alderman James is the view.
Well, look, I, I think we need to let the debate flow and people might be able to cast light on that particular question.
Obviously, the general manager was busy shaking his head, that's why I raised a point of clarification. I think it's important that the debate be properly informed.
Um, other speakers, please. Uh, that, you might get the opportunity. Any other speakers? All right, uh, write a reply, Alderman Blomley.
Oh, I think all's, as it be said, has been said. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, so the motion is, uh, approval, subject to conditions and vice. All those in favour? Against? Eleven point, uh, three point three is a development application, seven Douglas Street, BelReeve, two multiple dwellings. Thanks, Alderman Walker. Do we have a second, please? Thank you, Alderman Kendy. Alderman Walker?
The officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Other speaker? Motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point three point four is a development application, twenty-two Ramena Road, Lindisfarne for two multiple dwellings. Alderman Mulder, seconded Alderman Newington, thank you. Speakers?
Alderman Doherty's recommendation.
Thank you.
I have a question, uh, through you, Mr Mayor, to Mr, Mr Ford. Mr Ford, when we look at clause ten point four point four as the acceptable solutions and on page one forty-seven, for instance, we're talking about the, uh, the dwelling must have at least one capital room, et cetera, so... And the performance criteria, uh, discuss the fact of the height of the, of the windows, et cetera. But is there any specific reference that can be made to privacy, um, as distinct from sunlight and overshadowing? Or is it part and parcel of if the, if it doesn't, uh, meet the sunlight and overshadowing factor? Then can you say that a factor of privacy can be taken into consideration? So I'm just trying to see whether we can separate out or separate the two. Or is the privacy part and parcel of ten point four point four A1? And that means that if the overshadowing of the property can be addressed by the performance criteria, then we don't need to look at any privacy factor to come into for consideration? Could you just please explain that for me so I can...
Through you, Mr Mayor. We have two different separate standards within the planning scheme. One relates specifically to shadow, and that's what the best answer is coming. And there's another one that relates specifically to privacy requirements, you can't, you can't double it.
In relation to privacy, you've just said that it's another standard. So if, and there has been a reference to privacy in relation to this, um, and that's dot point two on page one forty-two. So if there is a question in relation to privacy, should there not be the standard that relates to privacy addressed by a performance criteria?
Sorry, can you show me where on page one forty-two?
Oh, oh, yes, look, on page one forty-two, one of the representatives or the representative referred to the impact on privacy, dot point two, one forty-two.
Through, through you, Mr Mayor. That was a concern that was raised by a representative and it was an acceptable solution, so it wasn't needed to be detailed in the report. The reference to the representative's concern is, is detailed in there and that's on page...
Privacy should comply with the standard.
Yes.
Need to pull solutions.
Okay. Any other speakers? Write a reply, Alderman Mulder. I'll put the motion for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item eleven point three point five is a DA, eight and ten Alexis Way, Oak Downs for four multiple dwellings. Alderman, uh, Newington, Alderman Mulder, seconded. Speakers?
Gasper Officer's recommendation.
Thank you.
The observation is that, um, if you ever thought our planning scheme didn't allow for maximized development, I think here's an example of four years stuck up the end of the driveway, but it meets all the requirements.
Other speaker? Put the motion for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point three point six is a development application, nine three six Oceana Drive for a dwelling. Thank you, Alderman, thank you, Alderman Mulder. Do we have a second, please? Alderman Newington, thank you.
Yeah, this is, um, a particularly interesting development, uh, given the fact that, um, it's on that large parcel of, uh, or one of the large parcels of land on the Droofy Point Peninsula, which has been the subject of a Clarence Council, um, initial structure, the approach to develop a structural area plan. Um, I also, um, note that the, um, the developer has, uh, that the owner of the land has put this application in to build a dwelling. Now, I'm aware of the fact that, um, this was a long time in the coming and this has always been where the developer wanted to put his land. Now, the structure plan in its very early phases is, does not yet exist, um, and so as a consequence of that, um, we shouldn't be using that as a, any means of assessing whether this application fits in with what is only a draft plan that hasn't, I don't think, even gone into public consultation yet. Um, in a sense, this may be seen as placing a stake in the ground prior to that structure development plan becoming, uh, public knowledge, um, or being signed off, but in the end, it's a stake in the man's own ground, so I don't think we're in any position to, to hold that against him. I think the significance of this area is, um, uh, on the lot where this house is, is this significant both indigenous and non-indigenous cultural heritage that's in there. Um, I know it was the original part of the Whaling Station and I also know that not far away is the, is the Chipman family residence, but, um, hopefully, hopefully there is sufficient disconnection in, in both time and distance that you don't feel the need to declare an interest in that matter. Um, so, uh, the, uh, in regards to the, you know, the Whaling Station and the indigenous, um, local, uh, heritage in that particular area, I understand that even as part of this, although it's well developed, uh, addressed in the structural pla- in the draft structural plan, uh, or the mooted structural plan, I should say, it's, um, also a condition of this development that there be, um, archaeologists on site to supervise the dig and to make sure that should any relics be found in a particular area, that they are appropriately dealt with and that the construction work can be either held or moved. So I think some of those things are considered. I look forward to this being perhaps the first of, um, of, uh, the development of this significant parcel of land, but I also might say that, um, as we later on discuss traffic and other issues, um, I don't think we've got the road network that will handle the development we've got down that way yet, let alone what large parcels of land like this and in the Clarence Plains and the South Arm area are going to do. So I think it's really time we, um, started to look at some of the infrastructure issues.
Um, oh, well, yeah, I mean, I, I agree with some of the points that, uh, Alderman Mulder's made there. Yeah, sometimes it's hard to, you know, to have things occur in a, in a nice staged way, but I suppose, you know, that one of the most fundamental principles that, um, exists in our society these days is, uh, maintenance of property rights and the fact that, uh, the proponents had this land for a fair, fair length of time and is in a position to, to do what he likes with it. And I just hope that, um, through, you know, more consultation and, um, discussion that we, we end up with it, with a structural plan for the whole peninsula which allows us to, um, you know, address the issue of the, uh, the coastal trail and the paths and those sort of things. There's a bit more water to go into the beach yet, but it'd be, um, it'd be nice to see that might happen one day as well. But, uh, at the end of the day, it's his and her. He wants to do something with it and I suppose at least we've got an opportunity now to plan the whole space in a much better way than if it was owned by a variety of different people. But I certainly think there's, there's nothing there that we can, uh, say that we shouldn't be wanting to, to do what he's asked to, to let us, let him do. So in support.
Other speakers?
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. This has been an ongoing matter and, uh, I can recall many years ago when David Carr's father approached council in relation to the development of that area and we're going back nearly twenty years. And the fact of the matter is, is that... And the fact of the matter is, is that, I understand it, there was always going to be a family posse in relation to this area, in that area, for a family home. And also, some years ago, this council made a decision for Mr. Parkinson to build on Druddy Point, on, not on Druddy Point, but on Ropie Hills. And there was a lot of debate about that, because there was a little posse on the hill that council didn't really want at the time have separated out from the hilltop, because they had an intention of having that pretty much kept for people and also for part of Kim Pearce' skywalk, which obviously was part of that process going right back. So the question here is that Mr. Carr and his family have always identified an area in a prime location for them to build a home, as Mr. Parkinson wanted to build a home. And so the very nature of saying that this has been a matter on their agenda for many years, in my view, doesn't do anything in the way of be subservient to the structure plan that we've discussed in recent times, nor to what the long-term changes, which I'd like to see before I leave this place, in fact, to have that road network around Druddy to connect up with Ropie. And I think that will happen, because the Carrs have always had a vision to do something with this area, and council has a stake in it as well, the old sewerage plant down there. You know, if you're interested in making a few dollars out of some real estate, then the council may, in the short or medium or long term, consider about allowing the development to proceed down there, and council may be able to make a very good return on its investment, which it's had in that land for many years. So, look, I will not accept the fact that we are trying to, or the Carr family, or anybody else for that matter, is thinking that they can jump in quick in relation before the changes are made or when the Druddy Point area plan is brought into effect. The fact of the matter is, this is a prime bit of land, it's owned by the family. It's had always been their intention to build on it, that's my understanding, and also to make sure that the long-term plan that the Carr family have is a vision for the whole of Clarence, not necessarily for the families. I support the recommendation.
Thank you, other speakers? Write a reply, Alderman Mulder.
Quite well, Mr. Mayor.
So the recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.8. 11.3.7 is next. Development application, 31 Pier Road, Possum Bay, for a boat grand.
Mr. Mayor, there is a slight, some of the typo, everyone's got into the recommendation. There is a slightly amended recommendation where it talks about the acceptance of the boat grand starting with multiple dwellings.
But there's no dwellings involved. So has everyone got a copy of the amended, amended recommendation? Okay, can I have a move and a second, please? Thanks, Alderman Newington, seconded, Alderman Kendy. Alderman Newington, would you like to speak to it?
As per officer's recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
As amended.
As amended.
The amended recommendation. Alderman Kendy? Thank you, other speakers?
First, Mr. Mayor, I don't see the need for this from a personal perspective, but then I'm one of those poor people with only a small heart, so.
Look, on the basis of that, I might put the motion, which is the amended officer's recommendation. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.8 is a DA for a number of properties, Bridge Street, Richmond, for the construction of footpaths and steps. I think Alderman Chong has moved that. Do we have a second, please? Alderman Blomley, thanks. Would you like to speak to it?
Just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, this has been discussed quite extensively in Richmond over the last couple of years. It's taken quite a while to go through the heritage process to ensure that it all fits with heritage and the community will be very happy to have it.
Question recommending approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Sorry, I apologize. Thank you. So, carried. 11.3.9 is a DA for 11 Gunning Street, Richmond, for two multiple dwellings. Move in a second, please? Clock's ticking. Thanks, Alderman Mulder. Another second, thank you. Discussion? Alderman Chong?
Look, this has been a subject of some discussion in Richmond. Obviously, it fits within the heritage overlay, and there has been some discussion about whether it's in keeping the heritage officer, both locally and the heritage of Tasmania have signed off on it, and I think people generally are understanding that whilst it doesn't look heritage, it fits with what should be built in the village, and this kind of development is inevitable in all facets.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to reiterate the issue in relation to the historic heritage code. As we can all see, it actually meets the requirements of the general residential zone in relation to such things as the density, the setbacks, private open space, the site coverage. But in relation to the historic heritage code, at least one of the representatives, if not a couple of them, were concerned in relation to the fact that a deep charcoal grey with the name of Matt Monument was actually, or is actually going to be used for both the walls and the roofing of the two units, and that they will be colour bond, because they feel strongly that that is not in keeping, is not sympathetic with the existing housing in the area with its heritage focus. And I can actually understand exactly where they're coming from. However, it is extremely difficult to vote for a refusal on this when they actually meet the general residential zoning requirements, and our heritage officer has said that he is happy with the aspects of the historic heritage code. So I think it's an unfortunate situation, but one that our planning scheme actually has this outcome. Thank you.
Heritage thing, I think scheme after scheme that we've had, including the original Richmond-owned Richmond Village planning scheme, which was in force when I was on council before, has said time and time again that Richmond is a heritage village, but that it just requires a mix, you know, that a mix of different styles, and we couldn't have it all Georgian architecture, surely. But, so I think there is a mix of things there, and that this house fits in with that overarching character, because it doesn't track, given its location, from the overall heritage of the village particular zone. So my only contribution is going to be one man's heritage is another man's brutal architecture.
I'll put the motion at, recommend, sorry, that was a write a reply. Write a reply, thanks. So I'll put the motion which is recommending approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Against? Carried. That concludes our business as a planning authority. There's nothing under customer service, so moving on to asset management. Item 11.5.1 is that council adopts the Seven Mile Beach Coastal Reserve Activity Plan for 2019-2029, as amended. I think that was moved, Alderman Kendy, seconded, Alderman James. Was it round there, or what? It was moved, Alderman James, seconded, Alderman Kendy. Alderman James.
Okay. The consultation has done extremely well, I'll leave it to the seconded to sort of address those matters that I think are most important to be covered, because I think she's had a hands-on and discussions with the community at heart, so. I'd say that I think it's about time we have this in place. It's the 2019 to 2029, so it's far-reaching, and I think that the response from the community has been outstanding, and I'll say council support.
Thank you, Alderman James, and yes, I have had extensive consultation with many members of the community, and they will be very happy with this approach, and so I request council support on this recommendation. Thank you.
Need for write a reply there, Alderman James? So I'll put the motion which is to adopt the Seven Mile Beach Reserve Activity Plan as amended, subject to the community consultation. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.5.2 is that council notes the DSG consultation regarding the Hobart Airport to Midway Point and Coase Way, and that GM to prepare a submission. Thank you, Alderman Mulder, seconded. Thank you, Alderman Newington.
You jumped, I'm actually moving an alternative motion, as discussed.
Apologize. Has everyone got a copy of that? Is that the one that you're seconding, Alderman Newington? Can you just briefly explain the difference between what the recommendation was and what you're moving, Alderman Mulder?
Has the changes highlighted in the alphabet, which are more to do two things, Mr. Mayor. One is to actually change the words, which the officers had excellently put together, but I think what they were really trying to say was traffic congestion, so we've sharpened it into some plain English. And also that we request a workshop from the Department of State Growth to inform council of their proposed traffic congestion solutions to improve travel time and rather likely with the Hobart region. So that's the motion I'm moving. Mr. Mayor, we can be quite prickly on this. The current state government project at Midway Point and Hobart Airport, in my opinion, are only kicking the can down the road. The motion is asking the state government to explain their proposed solutions to traffic for vehicles approaching the Tasman Bridge. Expediting traffic flow through Midway Point and the airport turnoff only kicks the can down the road, extending the Mornington crawl from Mornington out to Cambridge, the Mornington out to Cambridge, which is only just a kilometer or two up the road from the airport where they're queuing now. Volumes of traffic using Pitwater Road and wanting to access the Tasman, the Tasmanian Golf Clubs are very low and occur only in non-peak times. So question the need for a roundabout, although I'm informed that Barilla Bay is unable to turn right onto the highway. I think the solution to Hobart greater traffic problems lies in bypassing bottlenecks with alternative routes for those who do not need to go through the centre of Hobart, along with a park and ride strategy for commuters. Members, yeah, councillors will be aware, or Alderman will be aware, that I'm a longtime advocate for extending the Flagstaff-Gully Road to the East Irwin Highway. The completion of such a link from Lordardale to the Baumbridge would relieve congestion both at the eastern end of the Tasman Bridge and clear its gates with the Lower Domain Road next to Brooker Avenue.
Alderman, would you keep focusing on the airport to the Pitwater?
I am, Mr. Mayor, if you actually look at the amendment, it actually asks for the state government to brief us on the very issues that I'm speaking to. Ferries will not be part of the solution until there are several terminals, each with secure car parks, and serviced by roads that are not already contested. Clarence Street and Cambridge Road do not meet these criteria, and the truly strategic idea is to service a Bell Reef ferry maybe with light rail. Not all bridge traffic needs to go into the city, so instead of locating our universities and hospitals in the CBD, as the state government is so busy doing, these facilities should be moved to outer areas where there's easy access, sufficient car parking, and room to expand. A city bypass along Harrington Street should be connected to the Brooker Avenue and the Tasman Highway on the Domain. These are the ways in which you reduce traffic congestion. But I do, that those are just ideas that I'm putting on the record, so that when we do get our briefing, we're in a position to discuss them. Because the bottom line is, we might support all these things, but they are just simply kicking the can down the road. We are starting from the outside in instead of from the inside out. That would be a truly strategic approach.
I think we have a second, Alderman Newington?
Yeah, I suppose it's a legitimate question to ask to find out what the plans are, as you say, moving the traffic down the road. So I can't imagine why we wouldn't want to at least ask that question as well. I'm sure there's plenty of planning going on, it's just a matter of us being kept in alert in terms of what the options are that they're putting forward.
I am very supportive of the motion, particularly D being added. Except the briefing on Friday, we did discuss the long-term sort of vision in relation to the road network between the airport and Sorrel. And we do know that stages three, four, and five are in the pipeline to 2050, I think. That's the timeline that has been discussed, I think, by the state government in its earlier discussions in relation to the upgrade of the Tasman Highway. It's interesting, and I'm very supportive of, the council does not support the loss of land for the Tasmania Golf Club. And this is one of the prestigious golf clubs. It's had its ups and downs, it's had its problems over the years, and we know about that. But nevertheless, they've fought through, and the facility is outstanding. If anybody's ever been, well, most, I think, have. Not only is the golf course immaculate, and it's probably the, one of the key golf courses, it's got 18 holes. If there was any limitation, if there's any limitation in relation to that, then I'm sure it would impact upon the actual question of whether it would meet the requirements of a super-duper golf course that would meet.
Seven hole golf course.
Yeah, which I don't think is, is part of the equation. Yeah. So in relation to part D, I think we need to actually, and I hate using this word, conversation, that we need to have the discussion, I think. And discussion needs to be associated with a future workshop on the proposed traffic congestion solutions for the Hobart to Sorrel region. And we added that in because I think it's all-inclusive, and it does a better job in relation to council's situation in relation to state growth, south-east traffic solution options.
See council support.
It's interesting that state government gets brought into the conversation. Obviously, they're the driver of this intended bit of traffic infrastructure. I guess that's, it's something that they took to the Tasmanian population when they went for the election last time, and some could argue a mandate. I guess my concern with the way that this motion is drafted now is, if you go to the explanatory notes, there's issues with, there's two options, and there's issues raised with the alternate option around vegetation. And then whilst not naming that up in here... And then whilst not naming that up in here, but reporting it there, there's this explicit point, the loss of land at Tasmanian Golf Club for the purpose of road widening access, that council does not support that. Anyone who's had the misfortune to sit in this chamber for years will know my view on eminent domain and on property rights. It's something that I'm passionate about. It's a core fundamental of western civilization and it matters. I would however be more comfortable if we could find some nuance around this point because whilst we might not have in mind what it is, but it may well be that the golf club and the Department of State Growth can come to a suitable agreement. But the way that this motion is drafted, this basically would, would mean that we wouldn't be supportive of anything that happens there, even if a situation arises where the golf club actually thinks that it's a fabulous idea, be that through funding or some alternate arrangement. So perhaps if that could be amended with the mover's consent to maybe a comma at the end of the loss of land at Tasmanian Golf Club for the purposes of road widening and access in the absence of an agreed. It is possible that the golf club could in future be happy though with how it is currently proposed. I don't think that they will be, but perhaps if a big pile of compensation was put on their table, they would be. So if we could just perhaps work a little bit more on that with, you know, without the golf club's agreed consent or something.
I'll let the mover detail response to that.
I think it's really important with this that we realise that we are not sitting as a planning authority approving the construction of these particular things. What we're doing is we're responding to the state government proposal, which is out for community consultation. And I think it's, it's fair that we might comment in those ways.
I take that as a no, so you're willing to move amendment, of course. Okay, other speakers? Rider reply, Alderman Mulder.
That's the point. We're approving, what we're doing is we're commenting on, on a particular proposal. And, and I mean, the idea that the Tasmanian Golf Club, you know, that by us voting to support this, that somehow or other Tasmanian Golf Club would or wouldn't lose property or that's an endangered threat species, I think is missing the point. Because those are all the sorts of things to go when you actually put your planning application in. And I think it's appropriate that, that we might, as a majority of council, and if we don't, if we can't do it unanimously, it doesn't really matter too much. But I think that the motion as it stands ought to be recommended and it's, it's nice to know that we actually get a say in it.
Motion before the chair is as, the recommendation as amended by Alderman Mulder. All those in favour? Against? That motion is carried. Moving on to governance. Eleven point seven point one concerns the Lordedale Yacht Club lease that council gives notice of intent to lease. If no objection, the GM negotiate a lease and if not, brings it back to council.
I'll move that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman, and seconded Alderman Blomley. Would you like to speak to it?
No, thank you.
Alderman Blomley?
Elegantly put out his issue.
Are there any other speakers? Alderman Mulder.
Just a question. I think I recall some previous election campaigns that the Liberal Party, I think, had promised some funding for this particular club. Are you aware of that or anything to do with that?
First, Mr. Mayor, no, not aware of that.
No communications from the honourable member for Franklin, Mr. Trump?
Not that I'm aware of. I suspect that may have been, if there was such a promise made, it was made directly to the yacht club and not through our office.
Other speakers? Rider reply, Alderman Blomber.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Put the motion as recommended. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Moving on to item 12, Alderman's question time. There are no matters on notice, questions without notice. I think Alderman Warren. Alderman James?
Two questions. My question through you, Mr. Mayor, to the general manager, Mr. Paul. Mr. Paul, are you aware that the federal hotels will provide consent for the use of its private wharf at Kangaroo Bay for the Hobart to Belray ferry service? If not, are you aware of that? No, I'm not saying it's not true. I'm just not aware of it. And the second part of that question is.
Second question. Thank you.
My question through you to Mr. Graham.
Wrong.
Mr. Ford. Mr. Ford, is council going to advertise under the Clarence interim planning scheme the, for the public to comment on, any changes to local area provisions? And will that be advertised in May and June coming? And is that available to the public to put in?
What do you mean?
May, June, 2019. And, well, it's, let's just go to July. We're still, we're still in June, okay? We're still in June. You got any problems there?
Okay, good. Let's get a bit of focus here. Alderman James, I think you've asked the question that is it going to be advertised?
Okay, in May, June, July, okay, for the public to subscribe.
Mr. Ford?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll first clarify the first part of that question and that now is, no, we're not advertising the interim scheme. This is Clarence interim planning scheme 2015. That's the existing scheme and there's no amendments to it for you. What you, I think you're talking about is a local provision schedule associated with the future Tasmanian planning scheme. We've now got a list of requirements presented to council that we're working our way through. I expect that the mapping changes will be completed by the end of next week. I still am working on some of the supporting report changes and the commission has now given me a copy of their finalised draft. What is currently available now is the version that council adopted in draft form of May, in May of 2018. That's been submitted and available for quite some time. We anticipate that once we've submitted this scheme, they will tell us, they'll go through their final assessment, then negotiate with us as to when we're ready to advertise it. It's likely to take us two weeks to prepare that documentation and then we'll advertise it as directed, which will be two months. So in answer to your question, I suspect that it'll be advertised in probably August.
Mr. Mayor, could we have an update, if there is one, in relation to the Sport and Recreation Committee's status? So what has actually occurred since we approved the constitution?
Okay, thank you for that. I might invite Alderman Newington to answer that question.
So far, we have had a couple of meetings with council staff to give an indication of the issues that they see happening at the moment. Get a bit of background on their position on some things. The expressions of interest for members of the committee have been put out, been promoted through social media and advertisements in the paper. Alderman Pierce and Kennedy, myself have been discussing things informally as well behind the scenes. But until we get the expressions of interest out there, get the people involved, and then we'll start to get stuck into then some community consultation, meeting with various sporting groups and associations and get a feel for what other people think about, about what needs to be done. But we're still waiting for those final people to apply. We expect to have probably three or 400 people put their hand up.
Well, the good news is Kendrick, that voice representation, so that's good.
And when are those applications going to be in by?
It was, yeah, it was pretty, the GM could probably, not me, just know when that was. It was two weeks, I'll be another week or so until the closing, I think. Yeah, so it's pretty much happened pretty soon. Then we'll get stuck into the hard work.
Alderman Edens?
I just wondered if we had an update on when we might be getting our information about Lordedale Primary School and a workshop.
Through, Mr. Mayor, I think they're coming on the first of July to, no, 24th of June, sorry.
Brilliant.
Mr. Mayor, am I able to give my two questions, Alderman James?
No. Alderman Pierce?
Thank you, Mayor. I think what Alderman Blomber actually wanted to ask too is, we are going to inform the Alderman of what we're doing, that's what.
Now, the next, I've already asked the officers my questions, Mayor, so could I put on record, can I say, can we? Question is, can we thank the staff? Because I think they did a fantastic job. The Linus Farm Oval kiosk got broken into and a lot of us went down Tuesday night just to coin up. Everything was done. The place was a mess. I'd like to commend the staff because it was really well done and everything was put back together and everything was repaired. And that just amazed me. Why not?
Well, with the consent of council, we can record that, express our thanks and congratulations. Well done. Everyone's happy with that? For the minutes, please? Okay, Alderman Walker?
Through you, I expect to the general manager and that might then be handballed onwards. Have we had any correspondence or recent updates around the potential state cap management policy anywhere that's at?
I'm looking at Mr. Tooie and.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. At the moment, the state working party hasn't concluded its deliberations. There are changes in page to the legislation if we introduce the spring session of parliament. At this stage, not in the conditions that the substantial changes may be made to the act. I think at this stage, it appears as though we'll be left to each council to decide. It's only a place to cap management by way of developing their own viable.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think through you to the general manager, has there been any further discussions taken place on the potential development of an artificial reef at Seven Mile Beach, being Seven Mile Beach centred tonight?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, there's certainly none that I'm aware of. I know that a, the proponent of it did write to council some weeks ago. Mr. Graham's waving madly at me.
Of course, the proponent met the mayor and I several weeks ago on that. But it was only just for information. He's dealing a lot with state government at the moment as a tourism exercise and going through that sort of approvals and process. And he just came and gave us a bit of, showed us the drawings and explained it's still happening through the state government.
He'd come to the conclusion that anything to do with the reef itself was a state government matter and that flowing on from there, there may be inquiries to us for a clubhouse or something like that and access to it. Alderman Mulder?
Now, I refer to the promised resubmission of the Rosney Hill Development Proposal. Have you or any council staff met or had any communication with the proponents? And when can we expect a new proposal?
Haven't? But the general manager?
Through, Mr. Mayor, yes, I'm aware that there's been a number of meetings going on between staff and the proponents and they are actually coming along to make a presentation to council in terms of the progress of their proposal on the meeting of, I think I'm correct, the first of July this time? Yeah, I knew something was the first of July.
The workshop might do this, but given this is public land managed by council, are there any proposals, is there any buyback or clawback clauses in our contract that if we don't get one?
Through, Mr. Mayor, the land has been disposed of, so there's no need for a buyback clause.
But the lease is part of the.
I think that no lease has been entered into at this point in time. Any proposed lease is subject to a development approval ultimately issued. So if no development issue, no development approval ultimately issued, then there's nothing to clawback.
Okay, that brings us to the closure of the open session of meeting. So I could thank our three remaining members of the public for their attendance. And call for motion to move into closed session. Thank you, Alderman Pierce. Seconded Alderman Walker. All those in favour? Carried, against? Carried. Well, I didn't read it as a unanimous. I saw one abstention. Applications for leaving.
That was me. I definitely had my hand up.
No, well, I referred.
Because I didn't have it down early, sorry.
Did you? Well, I apologise. In that case, I thought unanimous. Is it your fault, Alderman James? Did I got confused?
I'll take it.
Thank you.